I'd like to call our Borough Council meeting for July 19th to water. Start with a pledge of allegiance, a moment of silence, and then we'll get into the agenda.
Change the agenda.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
You'd like to do that?
Well, we don't do the formal.
Oh, we don't do that? Okay, sorry.
I took note of it.
We acknowledge an executive session, we didn't have one, and I apologize for being late. Blame it on McDonald's, but it's my own fault. Start with public comment for those in the room and those attending digitally. Any public comment? How's your knee?
It's hanging in there. I'm holding out as long as I can for a knee replacement, so we're good. Anyhow, it's Audrey Coppersmith, 412 Osage Drive, and just giving a quick update to the majority of the borough this year, I had a chance to testify with Water and Sewer last week, still about CT4, the issues that we're still having with sinkhole number two. Fortunately, yesterday they came in and cleared out the water that had been laying in there for three weeks, and even had tadpoles and various other things, and they put some amended soil in there. I didn't get a chance to get over there today to see what happened after the storm last night that we got rain. There are people that are very concerned, obviously, of what's happening. This is what it looked like just last week before, or just before they cleaned it up yesterday. There was just water laying in there and so forth, so, and like I said, you could even smell it up to the houses. You know, they couldn't even like open their doors or windows because literally they were, that smell was just wafting right to the back of their homes. So, like I said, they did clean up the water, but I didn't have a chance to see what happened last night at about 3:00 in the morning when we got a thunderstorm. But anyhow, I talked to the lady, Ms. Higgy, from the first sinkhole, and she's been talking with the engineers and so forth, and she noticed something and pointed it out to the Myers people that were there yesterday. The first crew came in yesterday and they just started digging deeper. And she said, "What is going on? What are you planning to do?" And they said, "We don't know." So, they actually admitted they didn't know. So, they just dug some things out. Well, a few phone calls were made, and then they sent a second crew out, which seemed to actually know something of what was going on with the second sinkhole. They still have not figured out what they're going to do with it. It evidently made the same angry sounds that the first sinkhole did, that got filled with 17 truckloads of cement, but they haven't done that because the second one, I guess, what, two, three weeks ago now, was spewing out all kinds of concrete and so forth, and obviously they're not going to continue to put concrete in if it's just going to throw it back out at them. That's not going to be a doable solution. So, what she noticed also was, and she sent me pictures, and that's what I want to share, is before the second sinkhole, the culvert that was right next to the second sinkhole was actually straight, you know, was sitting straight in the ground. And yes, you can have some settlement and so forth, but now the culvert is tipped to the side, so right next to the sinkhole. Now granted, this is not how the hole looks because they've put a temporary patch on it, but literally the culvert is sitting like this, and the porch that's right next to that as well is starting to tip, so, because you can see that like with the post. So, I'm speaking on behalf of some very concerned citizens, one that just came home from the hospital with hip fusion surgery on Saturday. It's at the corner of her house. So, she's concerned if something were to happen, literally she can't move fast enough to get away from it. So, we're just asking for any and all help at this point.
That's pretty much where we're at. It's been going on for this part with these two sinkholes since the beginning of May. We're now at the middle of July. I'm sorry for, it's just, some of these people just have nowhere else to turn, and they were also told yesterday that the additional land that goes down with those five ponds that are all connected together, they're also going to lose additional space next to their homes. So, literally, people are going to open their back door and potentially fall into a pond. That cannot happen. There's no way that can be approved. We need somebody to basically investigate further what can be done. I mean, you can't have, especially in a 55-plus community, where people can't even open their back door for safety's sake and literally fall into a pond, whether it's a dry bed or not, because anytime it rains, it's going to collect water. And now the water, the way that they've kind of connected it, it's headed straight for a house right at the end of the row. So, if it goes all the way down, the pressure of the water coming off a ridge is going straight down through five areas, straight to someone else's home.
Do you have a homeowners association?
We do, unfortunately. They're not working with the community members. In fact, one person told, one person from the board told the first lady, Ms. Higgy, whatever, that she needed to stop all the fear mongering and so forth, that it was no big deal, and it was nothing to worry about. And his house is actually connected to the first triplex. So, unfortunately, you know, they don't seem to want to do, but also some of them, I think, have some conflict of interest in that one board member, the son works for the builder. So, that certainly could play a part in that matter, and we don't know what else to do, you know, so.
One question.
Mm-hmm, sure.
On the piping in, the cement had to be watered down, correct?
Yes, mm-hmm.
In what I'm hearing?
Correct.
It kept, how many truckloads did they send into that sinkhole area?
The first sinkhole, they did 17.
17?
17, 1-7, truckloads.
Really?
17 truckloads for the first hole.
Okay.
Now for the second one, they brought in, I believe it was between 3 and 4, and then they stopped because literally it was spewing out the cement at the engineers who were standing right there as they were getting ready to, in a drill. The engineers, even in the first conversation, were surprised when they plasticked off the back of the two homes initially, and the people were still in them. They said, "What do you mean? How are the people still in them if we're drilling right next to their house?" So, the people have not been removed from the situation at all, not even on a temporary basis.
Okay, so the trucks can't actually go in and, in other words, back in?
No.
They have to water the cement down?
Correct. They sit out on Basswood Drive initially, they sit on it, then they bring pipe or two, like hoses and so forth, it comes through.
Pumper trucks.
They do the drilling, yeah, and then they, the pressure trucks, yeah, exactly, and send it all the way down.
Okay, and then, well, have they sealed that hole up?
The first one, yes, but some of it shifted a little bit when the second one opened right across from it.
Okay.
And it opened like within two to three days of the engineers leaving.
Wow.
So, it wasn't much, I guess, assurance that we were good to go.
Right.
So, they're not sure whether we might be sitting on a spring or an aquifer, or, but we need to have definitely some further investigation at this point, and I don't know that the association is going to hire an attorney to, you know, do all of that, I don't know, but we've kind of proposed, you know, what we need as far as even having a community meeting, and we can't even get that at this point.
You can't get it right now?
No.
Thank you for the information.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and like I said, we appreciate anybody that wants to come visit. I'll be more than happy to, you know, show you what's going on and see if, you know, you could provide some help, because otherwise we're going to deal with a tragedy.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment from the current audience? All right? Can we go to the, our digital participants, please?
Those joining us online via Zoom, you're welcome to unmute yourself and address council.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Ivan Albright. My address is 684 Cypress Drive. I have a very brief statement for you this evening, and I'll try to keep it very brief and concise. I am the president of the Cherry Tree Homeowners Association. Ms. Coppersmith's statements represents her opinion only and is not the position of the Cherry Tree Homeowners Association. Ongoing stormwater construction issues in our community are being dealt with by J.A. Myers with consultation from qualified engineers from Hillis Karnes Engineering Associates. Thank you so much for your cooperation.
Are the, is there anything that you need from this organization to do, or is this just informational that you're?
Public comment.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Albright. All right, do we have any other comment from any other digital participants? Okay, I guess with that, then we'll close the public comment and go into the consent agenda.
I'd like to make the motion. So, I got to approve the consent agenda.
Any comments, discussion? All right, so that item 3, A, B, and C, that is approved.
We need a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need, yeah, we need to vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. I left for a minute there, thank you. Item 4, Finance Personnel Administration, the first item, A, is the Chapter 254 Amendment. Margie, would you?
Yeah, this is simply an error that was noticed by A.J. and Chad, Police Chief and Public Works Director, that, so this corrects the time on the parking meters. I don't know if, it's simply 8:30 a.m. to 8:30 p.m., and it needs to be consistent throughout the document, and it wasn't, so Dory corrected it, and it now is. So, that's what you're approving.
And also the references to the online payment system.
That was added as well.
And the increase in the meter bag fees, well, I guess that's all reflected in the miscellaneous fee resolution now, so, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just was correcting what we had already approved, because general code didn't quite have it right.
All right, I have a motion to approve that.
So, move?
Yeah.
So, I guess.
Second, any discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item B, the wastewater treatment generator rental and repair. I was surprised how much generators rent for.
Did you see the pictures and the size of it?
I, well, I never knew of a radiator that needed to be replaced with a crane. It's a little out of my league.
Tom will address this issue for you all, so you can just speed.
Tony Thomas, he's the supervisor at the regional wastewater treatment plant. We had talked about the emergency generator a couple days before this power outage, that when they had a analysis done of the coolant and the oil, they noticed copper and certain metals in the coolant that suggested there was something going on with the radiator. So, we were kind of going through the plan of how we were going to get this done, and I got a call Friday about 9:30 that the power went out and the emergency generator came on and ran for about 20 minutes and shut down on high temperature. So, we, it kind of made the choice for us that we had to get it fixed because that shut down about 25% of the wastewater treatment plant, the solids handling, the centrifuges, things like that. We think it was birds that actually started this, because we found a couple dead birds below the pole where the fuse blew, and it blew back towards Oak, where O'Brien and Oak are on that side of the plant.
So, this is for the MedEd incoming line?
MedEd incoming line.
Got it.
So, called MedEd, they were on their way. I mean, we're a priority customer, of course, for wastewater. The power was back on about 12. Cummins, who is the contractor at the Cummins Diesel, were called. They had to bring a generator from New Jersey, it was the closest one they had, and that size, it's about an 800-kilowatt generator, not something you could go to around here and get.
Know how it lives.
Right. So, long story short, what it is, is the outdoor radiator is probably five foot by five foot, and they're going to pull that Monday, and they already have been alerted as to what they needed to fix it, because we were talking about getting it fixed anyway. So, they'll pull that Monday, and they should have it maybe by the end of this coming up week, they'll have it fixed. The invoices you saw were kind of worst-case scenario, that if it took a little longer, I feel that it'd probably be cheaper than that, but we didn't want to, you know, present something that wasn't going to really be true, so we told them just figure worst-case scenario of what that generator and the repairs would be.
Now, that was to, it's going to go by tractor-trailer, am I correct? Be delivered to Silas Grove?
It is a, it's a unit, a fifth-wheel type unit to haul that generator. I think there's a, if you have the documentation.
Yeah, I was reading it all on my website, yeah.
It's a, it's a large unit.
Yeah, okay.
Runs a lot of.
But that cost, was that for the delivery over to Silas Grove and then bringing it back?
Yes, that.
Okay, that was.
Just to mobilize that from New Jersey, I think, was about $12,000.
Yeah.
And we may be able to work some of that down, depending on how long it takes to get this fixed, but we're thinking about a week.
Yeah, you had said a week to two weeks, or whatever.
Hopefully not two weeks.
How old is that unit? I remember it being said it was old, but how?
1987, when that unit was put into service.
1987, what's the normal life expectancy of these types of generators?
35 years.
No, I'm just curious.
35, that's it, 35 years.
Last Friday, I was 20, 23.
Depends how often.
35 years.
Are they used, well, are they used, is this particular generator used quite often?
I think Tony said it's been used maybe about three times.
Really?
And maybe the last five to eight years, but it's exercised regularly. It's set up to run for about 30 minutes every week, I think.
Oh, okay.
And they had a, the reason, we talked about it a couple days before that, and they had those analysis, it ran and shut down on high temperature, so we were kind of.
That you don't want.
Already activated to work on this.
So, we knew we had an issue.
We knew we had an issue, and Friday, when the power went out, it was, it was no choice, we had to do it.
Emergency, right, understood. Thank you.
So, motion?
Seconds.
All right, any other question? I guess, one of my questions was, should we replace the thing, as opposed to it's 35 years old or something?
I think we should get it on the radar, of course. We're looking at getting a bid from Cummins, Kohler, and Cat Diesel, so I'll take a look at it. It's hard to say, I mean, it could run another 10 years, or it could run 10 weeks.
Tell me when the next power outage is going to be, and we'd both be, you know.
Right, but I think we're going, we've already started to take a hard look at all the emergency generators that the borough has, you know, the age of them, the make, the fuels, things like that.
Counsel Roland, from a duty perspective, it's not uncommon for diesel engines of this size and character and duty to last significantly beyond, you know, where we're at now. I think the biggest thing that I would encourage us to continue to have evaluated, but what I found is that parts tend to become obsolete for these older units. So, we do exercise it periodically, but it is, it was designed to run for a long time. I mean, it was built pretty solid.
Right.
And we're, again.
It is diesel, it's not natural gas.
It's diesel.
It's diesel, yeah.
It's not a dual-fuel generator, strictly diesel.
Let's just evaluate, see what they say, and then tackle that another day.
When they become obsolete, do they have to hand-make parts, or how, or do we jump?
You buy used ones or whatever, it becomes a scavenging.
Potentially, yeah, potentially things have to be made, or we could possibly look at what the critical components are and possibly have them in our inventory rather than in Cummins' inventory in Harrisburg. That way, we own them, ready to install, whatever, you know, we have choices, I think. I think we're on the right path here. Let's just continue to evaluate what we have in it lifespan.
Absolutely.
Right. Just real quick, one of the.
Welcome back, by the way.
Building on what Tom said, one of the things I've asked for is, I've asked Tom to lead for an in-house study of all of our generators, looking at age, size, load, certainly redundancy, criticality, you know, I want to better understand what that looks like. One of the things we're finding is, the borough has a very hodgepodge collection of different generators. We have some of this type, some of this type, and things like that, so it makes some sense that maybe we'd look at some kind of a solution where we'd have all of the same vendor so that parts become redundant, we can share them between different pieces of equipment potentially, and so Tom's going to lead that effort to do sort of an in-house mini-study, just because I think this, this has kind of lended itself to show us that we need to do that.
The other thing, I believe, there's a revenue opportunity here, and Mr. Kress would know more about this than I, but we, as I remember, can take ourselves off the grid at MedEd's request during a, what I'll call a brownout event, and I believe we could also sell them back power, and I guess we do that, or?
I don't know if we make enough to sell back through this, this is size. These generators are sized for their plant that they're at.
I understand.
But you're, I get your first point.
Am I wrong, Mr. Kress?
We do have a program like that at the school, but we're talking an apple and an orange.
Okay.
These things are ginormous, so I don't think that program would be relevant.
And you're not critical infrastructure.
Usually with a generator of this size, emissions become a question if you're doing that, there are certain tonnages of emissions that you have to stay within.
All right, so we have a motion, I believe, and a second?
Yes.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you very much for your analysis and synopsis on the situation.
Thank you.
That brings us to 5A, the stormwater management plan for Chick-fil-A.
Good evening. So, normally I would have had for you a memo that kind of outlines what you're looking at here, so obviously as I'm just getting back into things now, I didn't get a chance to get a memo together, so I'm going to give you a little bit of context on this before you guys take action. What you have in front of you is, the Chick-fil-A existing facility is looking to add two drive-through lanes to the outside. Part of that is coming out of a realization that they need to better manage their traffic, much like other Chick-fil-A facilities, you see a lot of the traffic getting jammed up in the parking aisle. This is a chance for them to try to separate that and bring it around the outside. That's good, that's something we certainly want, and we want that traffic to get in and through more quickly so that it doesn't bottleneck up through things, but as it does that, certainly one of the things it does is it adds additional impervious area, and while it doesn't rise to the level of a land development plan, it's certainly rising to the level of needing to manage stormwater. You know, they are adding increased impervious area, and so therefore we need to make sure they go through the motions of what our ordinance tells us. In this particular case, we're talking about less than one CFS, so we're not, it isn't a significant amount of runoff that's being done, but all the same, they are going to be doing two subsurface facilities that they're going to be installing to try and manage that rate. One of the things that they have identified is, they went out with a boring rig and they did 20-foot bores, and when they got down into the ground, basically they found, not really surprisingly, one, the soils were not sufficient to do infiltration, and two, they were seeing some signs of potential karst geology, and that certainly, as you've heard from other conversations, we talk about sinkholes and things, we want to be very cognizant of that. So, what they're asking from you is.
What kind of geology?
Karst geology, so this would be karst geology where water can turn it into solution and you can create sinkholes and things like that. So, what they're asking for is, they are going to meet their rate control, but they're not able to meet their volume control. So, they're going to be able to control how fast the runoff leaves the site, but not necessarily the volume of runoff that leaves the site. And so, one of the things that I've asked them to do is, I've asked them to take a look at water quality, because certainly when we can't keep a volume of water on the site, we still should be cognizant of trying to improve the water quality. You know, we have a parking lot, a roof, and these other things that generate oils and greases and grits and floatables and things like that. We want to try to better the situation, and right now, there isn't anything out there. So, anything we do is going to make a better situation out of it. So, they have added to each of their systems what's called an isolator row, and it's a row where the water comes into the facility, spreads out really thin, drops out the sediments, drops out floatables and things like that, and then the water moves on to the next part of the system where it's held back for rate control, and then they go back in with a VAC truck and clean out that isolator row, sucking up all the grit and the oils and things like that periodically.
Sort of like a grease separator they use in a restaurant.
Yeah, it's just sort of a long, extended version of that. I don't have any issue if this council's inclined to move with the recommendation for the waivers, however, I am going to suggest three things be added as conditions if you did that. One, I would like to see them do a narrative on where that increased volume goes. I believe that it goes towards the piping system that moves through coals and some of that other. I would like to see if it has any impact. I suspect it's negligible and doesn't, but I don't want to be the one to say that. That needs to come from them. Second, I would like to see them add an impermeable liner to the bottom of the facility. Right now, they have a piece of geotextile that water can move down through. If we're going to put water into a facility and we know there's karst geology below it, it doesn't make sense that we would want water to go down through that. So, I am going to ask them to install impermeable liners on both facilities. And then finally, I am going to also ask as a condition that they would increase the maintenance frequency. I think right now it's scheduled for an annual cleaning, I think I'd like to see that stepped up to every six months to make sure that it's taken care of.
So, you just need a motion to take care of those requests?
Ultimately, what is in front of you is, because they can't meet to the exact letter of the ordinance, they need what's known as a modification or a waiver, and ultimately, what you're taking action on would be to say, "Yes, I grant that," or "No, I don't," or "Yes, I grant that with conditions." I'm suggesting to you that conditions are appropriate here.
So, Eric, question I have on volumetric control, I mean, this was the same issue we have with sheets on the corner, and they did underground storage with slow release.
Yep.
Did they look at that?
Their releases are going to be slow anyway. Their release on the two-year storm is like .2.
But they were, as far as volumetric storage, is what sheets did underground.
Correct. They're, so they're going to use, I'm sure you've seen the storm tech chambers, the arch units, that's what they're ultimately doing with a bed of stone below it. They'll inherently get some sort of holdup of those, I think beyond even what the numbers show, but the numbers show that they've at least knocked the rate part down. I believe there'll be some volume control out of it, but not enough to meet the ordinance.
Okay, which, which goes to the next conversation, is that as part of our ordinance, we do have an, you know, an in-lu fee program that hasn't been developed.
Correct.
So, we should probably put that on our schedule to get that developed, because this is, as we're starting to, you know, redevelop this, this situation of volumetric control.
It's going to play out again and again.
It's still playing out again and again. The last one we did, you know, we were trying to offset in other ways, so, you know, in this particular case, I think we need to, we need to start looking at, particularly with storm intensities.
Yeah, and we saw this with the Popeyes Plan, when they did their plan, and what they chose to do was actually kind of unique. They actually have a proprietary system in there that actually scrubs the water that comes through it and gets it clean before it even goes into the underground storage system, and they, they had the luxury of doing some grass median islands and doing some amended soils and other things. The potential, the problem here is, this is such a shoehorned site, and they're trying to just sort of add these lanes, and they're like running right up to the property line. It's just from a site perspective.
And I agree, I mean, I agree with that situation, but in our ordinance, we have, you know, maximum extent practical MEP for volumetrics, so we have to give them, you know, we need to, we should have that in-lu fee so we can apply.
Well, good, for example, if you got the in-lu of fee, then what you could potentially do is go out in front in that big grass-lined ditch channel, and maybe they could donate fees towards some sort of a borough-led project or effort, maybe we match it with grant monies, and maybe do a solution. Maybe we match it with grant monies, and maybe do a solution there versus just on your site.
Right.
But I would agree with you. We, we need to get our hands around what the in-lu of program looks like.
Okay.
What do we need to do first, though, after hearing what Chuck said?
For now, really, nothing. At this point, I would think it, it stays the same. You have these modification requests in front of you. My recommendation would be to grant them with the conditions of the liner, the conditions of the analysis on where this increased volume goes, and the increased maintenance.
Okay, so it's with modification?
With conditions.
Yes, okay.
Eric, do the conditions relate to the waiver, or are the conditions relating to the improvement, approval of the plan itself?
They are directly related to the waiver.
The waiver, okay. So for council's purposes, the action item in front of you is to approve the request for the waivers, as stated, subject to the three conditions which Eric indicated.
Can we have a motion for that, please?
So motion.
Thank you. And a second?
Sogge.
Any further discussion? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eric, motion carries. Thank you very much.
And the second, the second part of it is an approval of the stormwater management plan. So what you did with the motion first is agree to the waivers, and now with those waivers, now their, their stormwater plan is in front of you for an approval. So I would need a motion on that as well.
So motion.
Second.
Second. Do we have any question or discussion on that? No? Does that require a roll-call vote?
No.
No? All right. Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, the reports to the council members and the committee chair people. Dr. Rupp's not here this evening. Mr. Hegbert?
No, no action. No meetings either.
All right. President Rickard?
No report.
All right. Mr. Kress?
Did not meet.
All right. The next is Dr. Rupp, who's not here. And at last is Fire Commission, Mr. Kress.